Good evening. And welcome to the October 1st work session. City manager?
Thank you, Deputy Emerick. I'd like to ask Mr. Soblet, city attorney, to request a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Soblet?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Motion to go to executive session for forty minutes to discuss potential litigation.
Including?
Including myself, the city manager, Shelley Starr, and the council and governing body.
Okay. Elected officials, covers everybody. I've learned that over the nine years. Is it moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Harmon, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Twenty minutes?
Forty minutes.
I didn't hear that. Thank you.
I was raring to go.
Well, I did. While we gave you six and a half minutes.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, Carol, go ahead.
Okay. Do I need to repeat all that, or you want me to?
Just real quick.
Just, okay. This is the WPC, Water Pollution Control Labor Agreement. We entered into an agreement for a one-year contract. And the wage package for that contract has two components. The .75 percent increase to the wage matrix across the board, and then a one-step increase for eligible employees who receive a meets expectation or better on their annual performance evaluation. That, I say, the 2014 package comes to a 2.14 percent. Now, when you include all the benefits, it comes to a percent of the increase, total increase to the budget for 2014 is 3.35. I'll stand for questions, and we do have someone here from the union if you have questions for that individual.
Do we have any questions or concerns, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I was going to suggest that perhaps due to the difficulty of your presentation, when this comes before the council, maybe we'll have it. It might be a good idea to have it again so that we can focus in on it, that we can't really tonight in this length of time.
Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Union? Mr. Union?
Don Fincham is his name.
Mr. Union, Don Finch? How are you today? Today, this evening?
He's fine, thank you.
Do you have any comments or questions that you?
No, it was ratified by the members and feel it's a fair contract for all, so.
Questions for Mr. Union? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that all you have for us, Mr. City Manager?
I believe that's all that was scheduled on the work session. Deputy Mayor?
Okay. Is that all that's scheduled? Any other questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, this concludes our work session.
Would you please rise and give your attention to Mr. Harmon for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening.
Will you all join me in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening. The first one pertains to National 4-H Week. Whereas it began in rural America and it now serves youth in urban and suburban as well as rural communities, whereas 4-H is a nationwide program led by state land-grant universities in cooperation with local county extension councils, and whereas each of the four Hs on the cover represent ways youth can grow and develop in 4-H, whereas as part of the 4-H experience, 4-H members are encouraged to learn about and contribute to the betterment of their communities. Now, therefore, I, Larry Wolgast, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to hereby declare the week of October 6th to 12th, 2013, as National 4-H Week. And in the City of Topeka, urge the citizens to learn more about 4-H and to become more involved in 4-H as members, club leaders, or volunteers. And we have here the Shawnee County 4-H Agent Candace Mierpohl.
Thank you. Like to thank Mayor Wolgast for signing our proclamation. October is the beginning of the new 4-H year, so that's why we have our 4-H Week, October 6th through the 12th. We are proud to have 350 4-H members in Shawnee County, all across the county, and hope to grow that number. 4-H is a positive youth development organization for youth seven to eighteen, where we are learning by doing and making youth better leaders and neighbors.
And our second proclamation is in honor of Habitat for Humanity. Whereas Habitat for Humanity International is a global organization creating homeownership opportunities throughout North America, Africa, Middle East, Asia, Europe, Latin America, and the Caribbean since 1976. And whereas the Topeka Habitat for Humanity, working with a variety of Topeka organizations and community volunteers, have together built over seventy-five homes, provided services to over two-hundred individuals. And whereas this spirit of working together continues to bring hope to people living in our community, and whereas Habitat for Humanity International has built and rehabilitated more than 200,000 homes with families in need, becoming a true world leader in addressing the issues of poverty housing. And now therefore, I, Larry Wolgast, Mayor of the City of Topeka, to hereby declare October 7th, 2013, as World Habitat Day in honor of Habitat in Topeka, and urge the citizens of Topeka to participate through support of our Topeka Habitat for Humanity. And I believe its board president is Ed Clausel. Do you want to make some comments?
Tonight, we join our Habitat for Humanity family as we celebrate World Habitat Day and try to bring awareness to the need of our community for safe, decent, and affordable housing. In 2011, Habitat for Humanity celebrated building over half a million homes worldwide. Here in Topeka, as the mayor indicated, we have built seventy-five homes since 1985. Six are currently in progress. The goal of Habitat for Humanity is to provide affordable housing options with interest-free financing to families with stable incomes, living sixty percent below the median income. What this means is if you have a family of four and earn $40,000 a year, you can qualify for Habitat Home. We know there is a need for our services in Topeka because for the first time, we have a waiting list of families who are working on their sweat equity hours, and our office receives countless calls that we sometimes have to route to partners' housing organizations because they are not house-ready. We thank the City of Topeka for the recognition of World Habitat Day on October 7th and invite everyone to join us on October 7th at 1816 Southwest Fillmore at 10:00 AM, where we commemorate and raise awareness for our cause. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I believe we have a proclamation. I'm sorry, a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Ted Meis to come to the podium, and he would like to make a presentation pertaining to Topequins Who Care, and I think that I got a little stink preview, there might be a challenge in this.
Mr. Mayor, I have come here tonight to inform you that the volunteers who paint fire hydrants have expressed a need to be identified by a universal name. The name that has received the most acceptance is TWC, or Topequins Who Care, which we hope will please both you and the city council. TWC has two gifts for the city, which we hope will be displayed to the citizens of Topeka. This bottle contains marbles removed from paint cans, so the cans may be recycled. The second is a very nice pen set, which will be given to the mayor, city manager, or councilperson that comes closest to the number of marbles that's in the bottle. I will give a sealed number of the marbles to the city clerk, and they can receive submissions from everybody after they get a chance to examine the bottle. TWC hopes you will be entertained by our little contest, and the bottle states, "Each marble represents a fire hydrant painted by a dedicated volunteer as a gift to the City of Topeka." There's a pen set, and here is the secret. And here is your bottle. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ted, for the interesting presentation, and I think we will be following up on our guessing, and maybe by later tonight, we can have that decision. Is that what your, pardon me?
Give them a chance. Give them the chance.
Yeah, okay. You want to pass this?
Give them the chance.
Maybe you want to roll it around, make an estimate. And we'll have, I guess, maybe we can vote on some portion of paper we have in front of us and pass it to the city clerk at some point later in the evening.
Give us a chance, we can do it purpley.
Well, that would be, I think we better do it by written document. Maybe we tear off the bottom of this page, it says, from the city clerk, that has the people on it, the list of, have that, take, tear off a piece of paper if you have a pen, pencil, or writing instrument of some type, and, what would we say, more than fifty and less than a million, right? And be sure to put your name. Or you wouldn't have, you put someone else's name on it, if you wish. When you've done that, if we pass them to our left, to the city clerk.
Do you want to name off the numbers, or whoever?
Yeah, just, you might read the numbers and see what, so we...
Do you want me to name the numbers off?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Councilmember Harmon said 2,050. Looks like Councilmember Schwartz, is that right? 302? Okay. Councilmember Manspeaker was 345. Councilmember Compost is 434. Councilmember Ortiz is 275. Mayor Wolgast was 450. Councilmember Schmidt is 642. Councilmember Hiller was 865. Mr. Coulson was 386, and the number is 999. So Councilmember Hiller? Councilmember De La Isla is 2,000.
No, you get the jar, I get the pen.
That's the permit to the city, then, a gift to the city. All right, we'll find an appropriate place to display it.
Mayor, if I could, I'm really proud that Ted is from District One.
That was Rick.
No! I've been paying attention as he reports to us how many fire hydrants he's done.
Well, thank you again, Ted. It's appreciated what you do for the city. I believe we are, we have no changes or suggestions for the consent agenda, but we'll proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgast?
Here.
Ms. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Compost?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Ms. De La Isla?
Here.
Mr. Manspeaker?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Harmon.
Thank you. And then, as I said, there are no adjustments to the consent agenda, so the clerk will read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Anthony Fidel to the Topeka Human Relations Commission for a term ending August 31, 2015. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Stephanie Mott to the Topeka Human Relations Commission for a term ending August 31, 2015. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mike Padilla to the Topeka Human Relations Commission for an unexpired term ending April 30, 2015. D is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Mike Morsi to the Topeka Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending July 31, 2016. E is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Ten Karkoff to the Topeka Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending July 31, 2016. F is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Kevin Beck to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30, 2016. G is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Carol Jordan to the Topeka Planning Commission for a term ending September 30, 2016. H, our minutes of the regular meeting of September 24, 2013, and there are two applications. We have an open after midnight for Capital Bingo at 250 Southeast 30th Street, and a dance hall license for JJ's at 435 South Kansas Avenue for approval.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have heard the consent agenda, it is your pleasure. Ms. De La Isla moves to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Hiller seconds discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
And Mr. Manspeaker and Mr. Compost?
I vote yes.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. I'd like to introduce some of our recent appointees. Kevin Beck, if it stand, was reappointed to the Planning Commission. He is now serving as Chair of the Planning Commission. Carol Jordan is appointed to fill a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Mike Padilla is appointed to fill a vacancy on the Human Relations Commission. Are there other nominees or appointments in the audience? I don't see any. The others could not attend. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate your willingness to serve. We will proceed with unfinished business. Item A and ordinance on the Topeka Zoo.
Here's an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Coulson concerning concessions and admission fees at Topeka Zoo, amended City of Topeka Code Sections 1135, 010, 040, 050, 060, and 080, and specifically repealing Section Original Sections, as well as repealing Section 1135, 070, final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Wiley, the zoo director, to present your information on this and answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. During the 2014 budget planning process, the council reviewed and later approved a cost savings measure by allowing the city to contract out the operation of the zoo's admission and concession functions. During the due diligence process of generating an agreement, it was determined that the relevant ordinance had not been updated to conform to the city manager form of government. The proposed change will accomplish the following things. It updates the ordinance to the city's current form of government, makes zoo fees part of the annual budget process, and allows the city to contract out the admission and concession operation if it falls within the city's best interest to do so. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Wiley? Mrs. Hiller?
I have no questions. Move to approve.
Okay, Mrs. Hiller has moved to approve the ordinance. Ms. De La Isla, second. Is there discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Mans speaker.
If you could just explain the financial breakdown to me of having thoughts take over the gate.
Sure. And it's, what you're asking is a question that is actually separate from the ordinance change, but it does relate. The process of the ordinance change...
Yeah, Mr. Mans speaker.
It's in our minutes, or it's in our attached document, that this is part of the change.
It relates to it. The ordinance change allows the operation to be contracted out. That's all it does. It does not stipulate who to. Does that much make sense? Now, the reason why it's a little confusing is this is kind of coming late in the game as we caught the fact that this ordinance was out of date after the budget meetings, going through the due diligence process. To answer your question, though, there's actually four pieces that we are planning to transfer to Friends of the Zoo. It is our concession operation, the admission piece, the event rental piece, and custodial care of public trashcans, public bathrooms, and public lobbies. There are two main driving forces behind this. One is that, right now, both organizations employ staff to do the same thing, and by combining them all together, you get consistent training, you can use that staff smarter, you can have a person, you know, maybe cleaning your grounds in the morning and selling tickets in the afternoon, as opposed to two different people there doing the same thing. The other piece is that, when you look at it from a cost savings measure, there are not every day do you need duplication of processes. And the easiest example I can give is, you know, on a cold day in November last year, the city paid a person to work out of the admission booth. Friends of the Zoo paid a person to sell gifts in a gift store. We're trying to capitalize on the opportunity in slow traffic times to push those services together. So the arrangement is, we would pay Friends of the Zoo $25,000 upfront, and for that fee, they will manage the custodial piece of the public areas. They will administer the admission process. They will operate the concession stand, and they will manage our event planning.
Does that, is that along the line of where you see going?
Starts to answer the question.
All right. I don't know if you were looking for figures specifically?
I have some follow-up questions.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And then there's one more key piece to that, and that is, with the admission revenue that comes through the zoo, they will handle the admission process, they will manage that money. Ninety-five percent of it will go to the general fund, and they will keep five percent for essentially providing that service.
So if I may, what would five percent of last year's revenues be?
$48,000, $24,000.
Okay. Who currently provides, you say there's, so, many, many moons ago, I worked in the gift shop at the zoo and spent plenty of lonely Saturdays running the leopard spot, but I'm not quite sure how you could juggle running the gate and running the gift shop.
You wouldn't juggle, per se. Guests would enter through the gift shop.
Okay. And so as it stands right now, who, it's city staff that is manning the front gate?
Correct.
And it's city staff that is doing janitorial service, or zookeepers doing that, or?
City staff. Public works.
Okay. And so the assumption would be that all of those city staff have provided health insurance and capers retirement benefits. Am I correct?
Some are temps, and one person does receive capers full benefits.
So it would be one FTE position that you'd be abolishing?
This actually allows us to reduce by two.
Two? That's all I have, thanks.
I think in the, in the material, I think maybe that you were referring to for tonight, it said that the proposed ordinance change would accomplish updating the ordinance, making zoo fees part of the annual budget process, and allowing the zoo to contract out the admission operation. It falls within the best, if the interest of the city. So I think that gives us that overview. So I think that gives us that overview. Are there other questions for Mr. Wiley? Yeah, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brendan, first off, the zubilee was awesome, and the auction... I visited the auction this year. Had never, you know, done that. We need to get the word out more because there were some really awesome things on there. So...
Thank you.
Congrats to both of those things. But this realization of savings of $120,000, then that is... Is that the... Is that just in salaries we're saving, or is there any...
No. It is in salaries and merchandise that normally we would purchase and sell.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, when it comes to concessions, we will be doing a fair request for proposal, no?
The purchasing department did review that, and it chose to sole source this, and there's somebody that could potentially speak to this better than me. The reason why this is a win-win in this situation, and most likely nobody else could compete, is because Friends of the Zoo already operates out of the facility. They incur no additional charges to do that. They have a current management structure already in place. This doesn't incur any additional cost. And they are a nonprofit that's not, per se, driven by profit-making goals. I mean, we want them to be successful because that money goes directly back into the zoo. But this model isn't... It's not a capitalistic-type model. It's a set it up so that one organization reduces its costs while the other uses its same assets to do more.
Though I appreciate that answer, it didn't answer my question. Are we going to have open RFPs for concessions?
That is not the plan today.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there other questions, Mr. Wiley? We have one person who has signed to speak on this item, Joseph Ledbetter. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Governing body, in 2005, we had a volunteer group put together, appointed by various council people. I was on that. And we... The zoo had some serious issues going on at that time, and it took about three years to resolve most of them. We made recommendations back then. So when I saw this, I said, "Well, this is interesting." And I... So I did call the director today. I had some questions for him. The concessions, we recommended eight years ago that they go to Friends of the Zoo and save the city quite a bit of money. That's one part of this that I have no problem with. I do have a problem with one of the items, and I'll discuss that further. The... At that time, Friends of the Zoo said they didn't want to run it. They thought it would cost them money. And when I was looking at their books and looking at what they got for selling memberships, I said, "Well, we need something back from Friends of the Zoo for your privilege of selling the memberships." And they were doing some things. But what I liked about this plan, the part I did like, was that Friends of the Zoo seemed to be willing to come up to speed and actually participate more in things that would save the city money versus just making money and paying their salaries and running a gift shop and then providing, you know, some money for some traveling exhibits and some things that were a little more incidental in cost. And so that part, you know, I liked. We made other recommendations back then, too, like there was a construction manager. We didn't see why we were paying for that, and they eventually did eliminate that position. The part that troubles me a little bit is giving up the gate. Now, I was talking to the director today, and he said that's $480,000. And it was not that high in '05. I mean, it's come up some. But that is probably a tremendous amount of cash to just hand over to a third party if you don't have a lot of controls. The question I was wondering was, is that going to be handled by volunteers? Are they going to be able to change the hours of the zoo because they run the gate? You know, will they staff it fully as it is now, or will they cut hours back if they don't think they're making enough money as a nonprofit? I had a couple of questions about the concession, too. I said, "Are they going to be open at least six months out of the year, or have you even discussed, you know, that as part of a contract?" He said, "The contract wasn't done yet." But I said, "I understand." I said, "There's just some things you want. You want some controls." I mean, are they just going to sell ice cream and pop, and that's it? Or are they going to keep a few things out there that people want? So, I mean, those are just things that cross my mind. But I guess the thing that I was concerned with the most was, most of this looks fine to me. Transferring concessions, event rentals, custodian expenses, that's all fine. That causes FOTS to do more for what they're entitled to do, which is sell those, you know, basic gate passes, those family passes. But the problem is, who's controlling all that cash? And do you have people that, you know, for lack of a better word, just trust to entrust with that much money? I'm going to ask for more time.
Motion to extend.
Mrs. Ortiz moves to extend the time.
Motion to extend three minutes, please.
Three minutes, the least long seconds. All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes. Please continue for three minutes.
Thank you. On the admission, so as I said, you know, one of the concerns I asked was, well, could they change the gate hours since they're basically controlling the cash deposits? You know, can they, you know, address that? The other thing is, what kind of controls do you have in place for that much? Because a lot of it is cash. I mean, I understand a lot of it's debit cards and things. But anytime you have cash, you want to go, "Wow," you know? We just want to make sure somebody doesn't have a gambling problem, that's handling money. Those are kinds of things you look at, and I didn't know if those were even thought about. I'm sure the Friends of the Zoo means well. I'm sure they'll do well. I just think that these are the times you ask the questions, is when you are putting together a contract or changing something that, you know, passes that much control to another entity. As far as, on really, really slow days in the winter, letting people go through the concession... I mean, I'm sorry, not the concession, but the gates. I've seen that at a couple zoos. It's not that out of the norm. The Salina Zoo does. I've seen it some other smaller zoos, you know, do that in the winter. But, I mean, I think the concept's right, and I just have those concerns that I've voiced on record, and again, saying that some of these ideas, sometimes, you know, people in the community have already thought of them, and then it takes another eight years to get to, you know, the process. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, for your comments and suggestions, recommendations. I'm sure many of those we are... They're aware of. We take it into consideration. Is there any other comment, questions? We have the ordinance before us. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes. Mr. Man speaker voting no.
Seven having voted yes. The ordinance is passed and approved. Item B of unfinished business is the ordinance on the West Star franchise.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson granting to West Star Energy Incorporated an electric franchise, including the right to construct, operate, and maintain electric transmission, distribution, and street lighting facilities within the corporate limits of the City of Topeka, Kansas, and specifically repealing ordinance number 18297. Final reading.
Mr. Colson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mary Feeny, Deputy City Attorney. Chad Siblet, the city attorney, will present on this. And I'm going to change my buck right now.
Thank you. Mr. Siblet.
Thank you, Mayor. This was an issue that was brought up during the Budget Committee hearings to increase the franchise fee by 1%. Essentially, what's before you, this ordinance, doesn't change the franchise termination provisions. The city can terminate only if West Star doesn't comply with the franchise agreement and doesn't cure the default within 90 days. The 1% increase would go into effect essentially 30 days after it would... If it would be passed by this body, so it could go into effect November 1, 2013. And I would just ask, I know finance had sent some numbers. If you want to comment on what those increases would be, or I can?
Mrs. Meskey.
Right now, we're low-balling the estimate. We think it'll be about $600,000 per year for the 1%. In '12, we took in $7.3 million in West Star franchise fee. In 2011, we took in a little over $7 million. In 2010, we took in $6.7 million. So if we did a straight 1%, it would be a little bit more than $600,000, but we're trying to estimate our revenues on the low side.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions, comments to the council? Mr. Campos.
I appreciate the information from staff, but this is not something that I'm willing to support. It is, in fact, a direct... Or, excuse me, an indirect tax that is passed on to every single one of the residents in the City of Topeka. And, you know, if you come onto the east side of Topeka and southeast part of the city, you will see transformers that are rusted out. We need some significant upgrades in the equipment that West Star is using. I can't support this franchise fees, knowing that people in my district and throughout the city are going to pay a higher rate, not only with the increase in utility rates, but also an increase in the franchise fees that we're trying to pass forward here. So I would implore my colleagues to look forward in the next year in the franchise rebate program, which is something I will be bringing forth to this body. We do have to change it in light of the state statute that changed over the Homestead Act, which is no longer applicable to renters throughout the state. But we can make amendments to our rebate program so that renters can receive some of this franchise money back for those who live on modest income, not paycheck to paycheck. So I will not be supporting this, and I implore my colleagues to take an in-depth look at this.
Thank you. Mr. Campos. Are there other questions, comments? We have two persons who have... Perhaps we'll go to those next before we take action, who have signed up to speak to the issue, and that first is Kelsey Williams.
Good evening. I'm Kelsey Williams, here on behalf of West Star Energy. In summary, this is just a typical operation that we do with all of our cities, and they're open for renegotiation in certain terms listed within the franchise. The only thing changing in this is in response to a request from the city to change it from 5% to 6%.
And as I understand, then, actually, as this document shows, it is really a new document. I mean, we have...
It is, and there are...
The previous one, we sort of brought everything into it, but as council members, as you've seen, there are no strikeouts or anything. So it's really a new agreement between West Star and the city.
One of the few changes we made, which should help us be able to do our job a little bit better, is... Let me find what page that's on. Page six of the ordinance is under Section 5. The company, which is West Star, shall not be required to obtain an excavation permit for poles located in the right-of-way or utility easement provided the company attends and participates in the Utility Coordination Committee meetings, which we do. This just kind of prevents some regulatory lag in us being able to do our job. Someone knocks over a pole, or there's a storm, this allows us to go ahead and replace it without having to wait on a permit.
Okay. Are there questions for Ms. Williams? Yeah, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our document here, it says that it'll increase the annual revenue by an additional $600,000 from West Star from the fees. When does West Star then get to pass that along to consumers?
This is for gross receipts remitted monthly to the city.
Okay. So this is not an additional cost to West Star?
No. This is, in essence, just what we withhold from gross receipts to occupy utility easements and right-of-way that is remitted back to the city.
So the 5% to 6% increase is coming from where?
Gross receipts of utility bills. It does not include disconnect fees, late fees, anything like that, just gross utility receipts of actual bills within the city limits, the corporate city limits.
So West Star will be making less than... Less the $600,000, as Pam said?
In essence, West Star's not making any more or less. We obtain this money for the city for use of the right-of-way and the utility easements and remit it monthly, all of it, back to the city. So that's how it's increasing city revenue, is by collecting more and remitting it back.
And no cost to consumers?
No.
Well, it is going to cost consumers, but it's not going in West Star's pocket.
Okay. Thank you.
It's like an additional fee that will be... You will see on your bill each month. It has on there, I think, excise fee or something as one of the listing...
Franchise fee.
Franchise fee is listed, and it's been an amount, and that will be increasing...
Yes.
...by this amount.
But ultimately, this is nothing that goes in West Star's pocket. This is something that's remitted right back to the city.
It's a fee that's passed on. Yeah. Are there other questions, council members? Mr. Campos.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious to know, what type of comprehensive overview do you have of the grid system in the city? And can you provide that to this council? So we see what transmitters are up to date, where infrastructure is lacking and needs to be replaced. Like I had mentioned in my presentation, there are rusted transformers all across 29th and California Street. We get somewhat of a thunderstorm and no lightning or rain. We have half of Oakland gets knocked out of electricity. So how are you going in the future to accommodate the city and thus the payers?
If I can... I think if you went to make that as a request to West Star...
It is rhetorical. Definitely. But I didn't expect...
It would be appropriate to do, but right, we're dealing... This ordinance is dealing with the franchise fee, and I think our remarks, discussion should be pertaining to that rather than other issues pertaining...
Well, it's part of the discussion, Mr. Mayor. And of course, it's rhetorical. I don't expect a response from you, but if you could provide that to this body, I'd appreciate it.
Well, and just to touch on an aspect of that, this is not a fee that we are putting towards our infrastructure. It is to pay for the use of right-of-ways and utility easements, which we put right back to the city. We remit to them. Our infrastructure is completely unrelated. It's the use of right-of-ways and utility easements.
I understand that. It's an indirect tax that goes to every consumer in the City of Topeka administered through West Star, so it is a line item, Councilwoman Schwartz, that each person pays in the city. And we only do it for water. We do it for gas. We do it for electricity. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I think, actually, as far as the level of service, that's really dealt by the Corporation Commission.
Correct. We're regulated utility. And everything is...
Regular utility. So if there are issues pertaining to the proper receipt of the electricity through parts of the city, it's really an issue for the Corporation Commission, and that's really where the issue should be taken, rather this council will have absolutely no jurisdiction over how rates or the power is provided in the city.
Correct. And as we state, I mean, we strive our best to give the best, most reliable, efficient, and affordable energy to all customers, but that's really not of the nature here. This is just of the franchise fee.
Mrs. DeLeesla.
At some point during our budget sessions, we were discussing what the impact of this change would be on our homeowners, and we had estimated that it was going to be 15 cents on average. So I just want to make sure that we... And I don't recall exactly how we came up with the math, but we had talked about that this was only going to be a 15-cent increase for the homeowners.
A month.
A month. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. I don't remember. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you. Well, you can see who pays the bills in our house. It's not me, and I don't look at the fees that are on the utility bills. But this is an increase, a 1% increase, and I believe that our... But this is an increase, a 1 percent increase, and I believe that our city's residents do not need to have another increase.
Okay. Is this, is there other questions for Ms. Williams?
Well, I just wanted to, I know when we talked about this in budget over the summer, people were very stressed about how to handle needed revenue for our budget, and didn't want to raise property taxes, really debated whether to increase this. And part of whether it work, would work, had to do with whether Westar would be responsive and turn right around and get this done. And I just wanted to thank you for your cooperation in responding to our request.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We have another person to, who signed to speak, and that's Mr. Ledbetter.
Evening, governing body. Well, I spoke my opposition during the budget, so there's no sense repeating that. It's, it's already on the record. The small businesses and homeowners of this town cannot continue to take increases on anything. This is a 20 percent increase in the fee, and it does come right off the bill of every homeowner and every small business in this community, every church, anybody that pays a electric bill. I did have a couple, just kind of concerns. I thought, first off, it takes 30 days to implement this, and why not just line it up for January 1st? Make it at the beginning of the year. Why do we need an extra two, two months' worth of this fee this year? The second thing was, do you really have to set these up for 20 years at a time? I mean, it might be that future councils might want to lower it. Maybe you should do it for 10 years. I, I haven't had a chance to really do a lot of legal research on franchise fees, but I do know the city was involved in a franchise fee case with the Supreme, went all the way to the Supreme Court back in '72. And one of the things, and I'm not saying this, this particular ordinance is hanging out, because I just have not had time to look at it, and I'll just say it's probably fine, you know? But I'm just saying, I looked at this earlier case, and basically, the hold of that case in '72 about franchise fees was with a cable company. So the city did have authority to enact an ordinance for franchise fees for that cable franchise. But it also held that the system, that the fee exacted by the city for administering the system was far beyond what was reasonably or necessary for regulatory purposes, and therefore was ruled unreasonable in its size. And I'm not saying that applies to this, because it's my understanding this all goes to general fund. My problem with some of these things that are brought before the council is we talk about saving property taxes, which is laudable, I mean, that's, that's good. But then you raise sales taxes to the stratosphere, where we're the highest in the state. The poor cannot afford those either. The small businesses can't afford them. Or you come up with, you know, we have enterprise funds, and I've already questioned one of those on the record, and I'm not going to go into that tonight. But you have to be careful that you just can't continue to push these other fees and rates and charges out there, hoping that you can avoid the central issue of what is driving the cost of this city, and that is cost. We don't need more taxes, we don't need higher rates. We need to control our cost. That includes overtime for exempt employees that shouldn't be paid it. Overtime for some of these utility workers that are out on weekends and on non-emergencies. I'm going to talk about that in public comments. We've got to get to the heart of the matter, and that's control the cost, and quit just expecting the homeowners and business owners to just pay and pay and pay, and keep increasing and increasing fees and rates and taxes. So anyway, those are some concerns. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. One other point, I think, well, that was made during the budget time when we were considering this, is this is a tax on consumption, or however you want to, fee, franchise fee, and it is something that the governmental entities pay. So when we talk about payment in lieu of taxes, this is something the governmental entities, for, for instance, a state, they would be paying this franchise fee into the city for all the, the power used by state offices in the community. So that's one aspect of sort of offsetting some of the other costs that is only on the residents, such as the property taxes. We do not have a, a motion or action on this, council. Do you have your? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Harmon moves to adopt the ordinance. Is there a second? Mr. Schmidt seconds. Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Man Speaker.
That's all right. Just real quickly, I, you know, because of my work, I work closely with folks at Westar. I don't receive any compensation, so I can vote on this from Westar. But the reality is, is that Westar provides an incredibly cheap product to its consumers. I know that to be a fact when I've gone around to rural electric cooperatives and seen the rates that those folks pay. We're really on below par for, for what other folks are paying in the state of Kansas. That is not an endorsement of their current rate hike, but I'm just throwing that out there as information. And just as an aside, as of April 3rd, 2013, Westar had $150 million in projects planned in the City of Topeka, one being a major transmission line going to the new substation just south of I-70, and then the other being 15 other projects totaling $150 million. They also, if you've seen the Wright's tree service trucks out there trimming the trees for more reliability, they use the term reliability tree to make sure that power stays on when the wind kicks up and, and we're able to keep service going. I know when I talked with the CEO at one point, you know, the main goal of the power company is that we're able to pay for the power that they want to sell us. And so it's key to them to keep their infrastructure up and maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
Your yes, Mayor. We have seven yes, Campos and Schwartz voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the ordinance is approved, going to Item C, the allocation of youth and service grants.
C is adoption of the committee report from the Economic and Community Development Committee, meeting of September 23rd, 2013, concerning the review and allocation recommendations for 2014 youth and social service grants.
I recognize Councilwoman Hiller, who will give the committee report.
Well, we gave that last week. I'll keep it very brief. You all have a handout that looks like this, and the recommendations are below the bar midway. The, the two blue columns, the recommendation of the Economic and Community Development Committee was to allocate both for general fund and for CDBG at 2013 levels, and those are the numbers you have before you. Move to approve.
Okay, the committee's report is received. Actually, by Roberts rules, we don't need to approve it. It is, it is received to the, to the-
I'm sorry.
To the group. Then if you want to move-
This, this group needs to approve those allocations, that allocation recommendation.
That's correct, okay. And so Councilwoman Hiller is moving, in accordance with the committee's recommendations-
Correct.
That she is moving it to social youth and social service grants to be allocated at the same levels as 2013. Mr. Schmidt seconds. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Mr. Man Speaker? We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the applications are approved. Proceeding to new business, A is expenditures ordinance.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Coulson, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of July 27, 2013, through August 30, 2013, and enumerating said expenditures therein, first and final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval would authorize operating expenditures in the amount of $17,722,736.84, and we're asking for that approval. I will just make, as part of my comment, I know there's been a lot of discussion about reporting and everything. We're finishing up the September numbers, September numbers right now. Yeah, thank you. And it is our expectation that we will present the new reporting structure that will allow you to see both on a monthly basis and also a quarterly basis that has more detail. So we have, we have been responsive to the conversation that occurred here, and we think that should be pleased when we bring it to you, which will be very soon, as soon as we finish this report.
Thank you. Good, good to hear that. Your thoughts on this ordinance?
Not yet approved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ortiz and seconded by Mrs. Schwartz to approve the ordinance on expenditures. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have seven yes, Mr. Campos voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. I don't believe there are any applications this evening. There are no first readings, so we will proceed to presentations. Mr. City, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, our council. I just really wanted very quickly to talk about the neighborhood relations position that was introduced last week, and Darren Scott stepped into that position. Very exciting. I think he has a unique set of skills. He understands the city, understands the neighborhoods. We're working very diligently to address many of the code issues and the code enforcement issues, how we, how we do it, what the code looks like, and, and many other issues associated with that. We plan on coming back to you very quickly with our, with our plan to address many, many issues. So, and once again, I, I think we've been kind of quiet in the last couple of weeks, but I want you to know that staff's been diligently working on many items that were discussed during and throughout the budget process. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. I want to just comment briefly on that Councilmember Schmidt and I attended the intercity trip that the Chamber Go Topeka organizes, and we were in Fargo, North Dakota, metropolitan area of about 210,000 of Fargo, Moorhead, Minnesota, and West Fargo, very similar to Topeka. Just two points that I would make of the, of the learning process. Number one is what they're doing in their neighborhoods. They have the most, by far, one of the most forward-looking processes of dealing with issues within neighborhoods. The entire city is composed of neighborhood associations, having goals. They have a program to help their neighborhoods improve their structure. So that was very exciting to hear, and also then have an outstanding program for entrepreneurs, young people, entrepreneur programs, supporting them, helping them develop their own processes. And the success that is there is unbelievable. The major problem in this community is they can't find enough people for their jobs. Their, their economy's growing so rapidly, they have difficulty in being able to provide all the needed people in their, in their industries and organizations. So it's very exciting, very similar, very similar in Topeka, in Topeka in many ways, okay? And with that, I will proceed. Mr. Harmon and Mrs. Hiller?
Real quickly, it's been a busy week for me. I have had a lot of street, alley, and sidewalk constituent issues. Kind of swamped with them. There've been both half-cent sales tax and other sources. I just wanted to say I appreciate the staff's assistance. We have been able to work through pretty much all of them in pretty short order, and that's not easy. I also co-presented with our bikeways coordinator, Julie Anderson, at the Build Environment and Outdoors Conference this week. Topeka hosted that conference. There were others from Topeka that presented at other sessions as well. And I just wanted to share with all of you that we, we co-presented with Wichita. It went well. It was well-received. My part was to talk about the strong citizen participation, engagement, and involvement in our bikeways development. It was, it was great to present that. At the same time, we've got a long way to go. Scott Waddle from Wichita just says, "So, we're having a friendly competition, huh?" They are way out there, as are other cities in the state, with their bikeways development. I also wanted to, many of you saw the photo, but my colleague John Campos and I got out on the river as the governor, and a group of about 100 people floated from Wamigo, canoed or kayaked from Wamigo to Bellevue to open up the new boat ramp at Bellevue. We're now up to, I believe it's 19 boat ramps on the river between Junction City and Kansas City. It is really opening up steadily for recreation. It was fun. And it, it made it even more compelling to see if we could get the section here through Topeka open and open safely. And last, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Schwartz. She invited me to join her for coffee and conversation at a coffee house in, with people from her district last week. It was well-attended. It was a lot of fun, and a good model for all of us to think about doing more of. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to extend some congratulations to Amber, who is an assistant to Ginny in the council office. She just had a baby girl, right? Yeah, just had a baby girl a few days ago. So congratulations to you and your family. To follow up on what Councilwoman Hiller was saying, it was nice to go out onto the river with the governor and speak about an unleveraged asset that we have here in the city and in the state. If you come to District 1 and District 2, we'd be happy to take you around the river at some time, even put you in a kayak, and hopefully you don't make your way down to Lawrence too fast. But nonetheless, it, it is a vital asset for us to recognize. People always fish. There are points in the river where you can just walk straight across the sandbars and, you know, not be in much trouble with undercurrents. The perception of the river is that it's dangerous, you know? There's a folklore that kind of goes through my community, and I've grown up with it, that we stay away from the river. And I think we need to position ourselves, Mr. Mayor, to, to actually open that up. It is a vital place for recreation. I do want to invite people out. We do have Kids Night this Saturday at Garfield Community Center. I will be working with the Topeka Community Foundation to be showing Toy Story 3, starting at 7:15 this Saturday. Also, we do have a movie on the lawn on the south part of the Capitol. I believe it's Goonies or City Slickers. I don't know which one it is.
Goonies.
Goonies. Hey, you guys. And lastly, never mind. That's, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mrs. Ortiz?
Well, I was just going to announce that Goonies is playing at the Capitol, 7:30. Bring your own lawn chair or your blankets, and I didn't know about Toy Story. So they're both free, and I guess I have to flip a coin, and-
Now, which, which night is that at the Capitol?
It's Saturday night.
Are they both Saturday?
Mm-hmm, they're both Saturday. They, they did that because people want to go out on the lawn and go to the movies, and they used to have them on Thursday nights, and people were kind of complaining. But I tell you, there's been a lot of, a lot of families doing this, and it's, it's just rather awesome. So if you get a chance, it's awesome place to be. Thank you.
Ms. DeRiswa? Mr. Man Speaker?
I would just note that it's been 47 days since we found out that the fire department was receiving overtime and supervision positions, and that practice has not ceased yet. Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to announce on Thursday, it is Jump Starts Read for the Record, and I'll be at Bishop Elementary, reading to the kindergarten class the book Otis. And here's Otis, and I'll leave that with the, the class. You can get a digital version of this at wegivebooks.org. It's free to the public, and their whole purpose is to try to get as many people reading to kids as possible on the, on the same day. Williams will be, I guess they've been on the Today Show and everywhere else. So let's all read to our kids on October 3rd. The other thing is that we have Apple Festival this weekend on, on the, on the 6th, on Sunday, and I'll be working out there at the festival at the Ward Mead, with the Ward Mead Park Gardener Club. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also be reading Otis to Wanamaker Elementary on Thursday, so I encourage everybody to get involved with that program. I wanted to send out congratulations to the undefeated Washburn football team, who won this weekend as well, and to express gratitude to Brendan for the Zuba Lee this weekend, which was, I thought, a fabulous success. And to further on the mayor's points from our trip to Fargo, I wanted to, to touch on that. He talked about the entrepreneurial spirit that, that's within that city. I think it was remarkable to see what a revitalized downtown does to a city, the energy that it brings, the young entrepreneurs that were there. It was, it was a rather amazing display of public-private partnership in- It was a rather amazing display of public-private partnership in education and training. It's left them with a job situation where they have staggering 3% unemployment, which is virtually no unemployment, and they're actually have, they have 6,000 jobs open that they cannot fill right now, which I think is an important or a nice goal for us to have. Some of the things that the young entrepreneurs that we got to meet with talked about were the ideas of livability. That's what allows them to retain and to attract young talent to their city. It was remarkably impressive, and it was interesting to see how important the idea of livability, of having a thriving downtown, of having extraordinary neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, a sense of community, and a sense of civic pride was to the great economic environment that they had going on there. It was a great trip, and I will give you further details in a report later, a later date, but thank you.
Thank you. We have three persons who have indicated they want to speak in public comment. The first is David Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez, proceed.
Hi there. I come here because I have, and something came to my attention that needs to be addressed, which is that of our public waters. And I talked to our public water system, and it told me that they're adding fluoride to our public waters, which people drink on a daily basis. And I found that troubling because I did some research on that, and fluoride, which is, people say that's good for you because it's good for dental cavities and such, like to prevent any dental problems and such. But after doing some research, it has come to my attention that it has many negative effects that has not been, you know, talked to the people about. And so, I'm going to read a little bit about what my research has, you know, shown. As of May 2013, a total of 43 studies have investigated the relationship between fluoride and human intelligence. Of these investigations, 37 of 43 human studies have found elevated fluoride exposure is associated with reduced IQ. Now, out of these 43 studies, Harvard scientists reviewed 27 of these, and have come to the conclusion that it is a high research priority, which means that we need to have more research into the effects of fluoride upon our, upon human consumption. And after much more, you know, study, they have come to the conclusion that fluoride has, indeed has an effect on a child's neurodevelopment, which means that fluoride ingested over a long period of time does decrease a child's IQ by eight points. And not just that, but people see fluoride as a form of medication. But what's troubling to me is why is it being, you know, put into the public waters? Do people not have a right to decide that they want fluoride in their waters, or do they not have the option, the choice, to choose, you know, to be able to drink water that's readily available, you know, just for your fluoride, instead of having to buy bottled waters, you know? And also, more research has shown that the Food and Drug Administration say that fluoride is a drug, not a nutrient, when used to prevent disease. And so, by definition, fluoridation of the water is a form of medication, which brings up a moral, you know, question is, wow, it's why are we medicating the people without their consent? And most of Western European nations that reject the practice of fluorization are waters, public waters. And 97% of Western Europeans do not drink water that is fluoriated. Instead, they ban that practice, putting fluoride into our waters. And 90% of both the UK and Spain also do not follow that practice. And proponents for fluoride, they state that fluoridating the water lowers tooth decay. However, research has shown that, that tooth decay had declined in all Western countries, not just, you know, the United States or Canada, but it also shows that it has declined because, you know, proper, you know, tooth care, you know, using toothpaste and such, going to the dentist, not because we put fluoride into our water systems. And that has been, that was from a study of WHO, which is the World Health Organization. And also, fluoride ingested over long periods of time have correlated with a range of serious effects, including arthritis, damage to the developing brain, reduced dirotic functions, which is considered the Adam's apple, which, where is it at? Oh, wrong one. There we go. Which regulates the body metabolism rate and plays an important role in the human health for all metabolism active cells are regulated by the dirotic. And also increases the chances of osteosarcoma, which is a form of bone cancer, which affects tissues that support parts of the body, fat, bone, muscle, and soft tissues.
Do you have to conclude your remarks?
Yes, please. If I can have at least two more minutes, if possible.
Motion to extend.
Second.
Mr. Man speaker's move to extend for two minutes. Mr. Campos, seconds. All those in favor vote yes. Those opposed vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, please continue for two minutes.
All right. And the fluoride is added to our water systems is not naturally occurring. Instead, it's known as fluorocilic acid. It is a corrosive acid captured in the air pollution control devices of the phosphate fertilizing industry, which includes a higher risk of cancer hazard from acid elevated arsenic content and neurototic acid from the acid ability to increase erosion of lead from old house pipes. And to make it matter worse, fluoride, the fluoride that's added to our public waters is not, it does not go under any purification process, which is troubling in itself. And fluoride's main benefit does not come from being ingested or drank. Instead, the main benefit comes from being applied in a topical manner, such as toothbrush. And once fluoride is put into the water, it is virtually impossible to control those for each individual who drinks out of public water, tap water, because people drink different amounts of water, especially people who work out in the sun, manual labor, and athletes. And fluoride accumulates in the body. Healthy adults, kidney excrete 50 to 60% of fluoride ingested each day. The remainder accumulates in the body largely in caspine tissues, such as the bone and the pineal gland, which is responsible for the synthesis and secretion of the hormone melatonin, which regulates onset of puberty in females and helps protect the body from cell damage caused by free radicals. And so, one of my questions is, what do we need to do, you know, to stop the process of putting fluoride into our waters, drinking waters, of course?
Well, this is a time when you make a presentation. It isn't a time of question and answer. If you have a copy of your presentation, that we could have that, that would be helpful.
Oh, I do not have one at the moment.
Pardon me?
I do not have one at the moment, but if possible, I can send an email to each of you guys.
That would be fine. If you could send the material to us, that would be appreciated.
Is there a chance, like, would I need to start a petition or something like that, get signatures?
Okay. Why don't you check with the legal department after the meeting? This is a time to just make a presentation.
All right.
We don't provide information back and forth here, okay?
All right. That works.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. The second person to speak is Mr. Ted Mize.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, council persons, you know my name, Ted Mize, and I live in central Topeka. I apologize at my appearance tonight, but I came directly from the streets of Topeka working to improve the looks and safety of this city. In fact, I've taken care of 18 fire hydrants in the last two days. I am still asking for your help in contacting persons that are willing to contribute to the community, and this is a continuing goal. What I have sitting here is a project bag that I issue to volunteers. It contains paint, spray handles, scraper, wire brush, broom, well, the broom's sitting over there, a masking tape, and cover material, and a map. I give detailed instructions, I give detailed instructions to my volunteers, and we are part of the fire protection program of the city. I've been told by groups, once involved in this type of volunteer service gives a person satisfaction because there is a visual result for the community. The groups are given a choice of the area in Topeka on which they work, and I speak to the listeners tonight who might be interested to contact me or any city agency, and we will work with you. We should remember that the beauty and safety of Topeka is a responsibility of all of us. And one added little thing that I've run onto, and I think we really need an ordinance, but I don't think we have one, is that unfortunately, there are some people that like to plant stuff around fire hydrants. This makes them number one and accessible, and at the project I happen to be working on, I had to hunt for this fire hydrant. I knew where it was because of the map, but the fire department doesn't carry them. And we really ought to have something that says that the visual obstruction to a fire hydrant should be illegal. Well, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mize, for your presentation. Our third person is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Well, I was just thinking about that problem Ted just posed, and I thought maybe if there were more Dog at Larges, they would take care of those fire hydrants. I was glad to see Ted return the marbles that I know have been missing from City Hall for many years. Wow, that went over good. I'm talking about before you all got here, of course. I had a concern, I raised this with the manager's office, he did deal with it. I turned in, well, let me just start this again. On Labor Day, 8 o'clock, I was in town picking up something, and I noticed a city vehicle, dump truck, empty, traveling pretty fast on 37th and Burlingame, and I said, "That's interesting." And so, I turned that in. I said, "Why do we have city employees working overtime on Labor Day since we seem to have a serious overtime problem in our budgets?" I was told, I talked to Doug in charge of Public Works later, that that, in fact, was a non-emergency event. And so, I thought, I wonder how often that happens, because I've seen it more than once over the years. I've seen, I'm not going to go into all the details, but I have turned some of these in, in the past, and what happens is overtime, that overtime gets added to pensions, which makes those pensions even better. And I'm just pointing out, I think we've got a problem, and I think it needs to be dealt with before the next budget. I looked back at some articles, said that the water department had run up a million dollars' worth of overtime this last spring. I remembered a conversation from a consultant that was here. Never saw his report for the city, but I did go down to Wichita and see what he reported there. Figured it'd be kind of the same whenever he presented up here. But he said something very interesting at the library last spring. He said that he had found that on numerous occasions, city employees had, in their testing or flushing of lines, were breaking the lines, and he told them they needed to lower the pressure that they were cleaning them out with. You wonder how many breaks were because of that, and then it went to overtime. I'm sure none of that is deliberate, but when you talk about the kind of cost and budget problems this city's got, you have got to start looking at overtime. The private sector does. And actually, the postal system is doing a lot of studying about how to cut their overtime right now, and they're doing it. And so, there's a quasi-governmental agency that's paying attention to it. So, I believe that governments absolutely have to look at these things and deal with I was also out, just doing, riding my mountain bike around Forbes over the Labor Day weekend, and I did about seven miles out there. And I went up on the north end and saw how many empty warehouses we now have that used to be full of jobs, and I'm talking about just a couple of years ago. And I was wondering where was GoToPec on that? Maybe they were at Fargo. Maybe they were at Fort Collins, Colorado, last year when we lost Hallmark's. I didn't know where they were, but it was about 10% of those buildings were full on that north end, and they used to all be full, and it wasn't that long ago. I would ask for an extension of time.
Motion to extend. How long do you need?
Two minutes.
Motion to extend for two minutes. Mr. Man speaker moves to extend for two minutes. Mr. Elisa, seconds. Discussion, all those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight yes. Please proceed for two minutes.
It's really past time for us to start dealing with economic development and that contract that GoToPec has, and their contract's coming up again. And it's time for the public to be allowed to comment at length about how to deal with their problems, or our problems, which are, and how they are not dealing with the economic woes that this city is facing. It's time for the public to be allowed to speak at length. As long as they do, we need to be able to talk about everything and get this all on the record, including the reforming of that contract, which has way too many holes in it, in my opinion. One of the reasons Fargo's doing so well, and I'm going to check this out, this is a question, do they have a lot lower taxes than we do? It's a capital city. But I do know one of the reasons they're succeeding very well in North Dakota, I'll check it out. They have gas fields and new oil discoveries just west of their Capitol. Of course, they've got a lot of new jobs up there from oil expansion with the tar sands. I think one of the best ways to deal with the remaining two years of the economic development tax is to let the city just run its own program, and let's see what you can do. I have to believe you can do better. I just have to believe you can do better than what I'm seeing. And when I see empty warehouses in an industrial park, that's what Forbesville is. It's all industrial. I see no need to be going out and buying more land for an industrial park south of town. We've already got about 500 acres, and yet they continue to add to it and add to it, and there's only one business out there. And, you know, for lack of a better word, I just think it's ridiculous. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Is there other items before the council? If not, we are adjourned.